Ladies and gentlemen, calling the Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session, the second day of the second month in 2022. To order, Ms. Branch, do you call the board please?
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Just about.
Yeah. Everyone had a chance to look at the, I think it's the second or third amended agenda for this evening. Any questions, comments?
It says two.
Yeah.
One.
Only that matters.
Entertainer motion to adopt?
To move.
So. Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. Mr. Ashcraft, if you'd open up the session this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is your second work session for the FY23 budget. And the format we're going to follow is the same one that we did at the previous meeting. I will introduce our Finance Director, Ms. Sterling, and she will give an overview of each budget and then their representatives in the audience who will come later, if there's other comments they would like to make or certainly answer any questions that you might respond to. And I would emphasize again that what you're reviewing is not a recommendation from county administration. We're collecting the information just as you are, and when March 14th comes, I will have the budget for you to review at that time.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
That's okay.
First up, Ms. Linda Hodges from the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board.
Good evening. As always, I appreciate this opportunity to meet with you regarding the Community Services Board. But before I begin, I do want to recognize the King William Board Representative, Mr. Matt Kite, who's been serving on our board. Greatly appreciate his presence. So what I have provided to you this evening is information on how we've served King William. You've gotten a little bit about that information prior to this evening, and I want to highlight a few things. But the bottom line is we are requesting an increase over last year. That's a 5% per capita increase from 373 per person, per capita to 391.
Could you tell us where that comes from?
Um, hold on.
Is it 60,000?
Hold on. Actually, I didn't, I did, it was 60,000 last year, so it'll be a little bit more this year. I based it on the census, which was 17,810 for the census. I don't know how you base it, but I got my data from the 2020 census.
So that would be 5% more than the 60,000?
Last year was 60,624, so it'd be probably a 5% increase over that.
About 60.
I calculated 69,637, but that's that was just loose. That was 391 times 17.
Well, but actually, you know, if you think about it, it is more than 5% because you're last year I based it on 16,253 residents. This year I based it on the 2020 census, which was 17,810 residents. So it is more than 5% increase because of the increase in number of residents.
It was the total.
69, excuse me, 69,637 and 10 cents.
Thank you.
Yeah. But even with this increase, I just want to point out that this this, we will still not likely meet our 10% match as required by the Department of Behavioral Health. You know, they give us state monies and they expect a 10% match by the localities. In previous years, we've gotten that last year specifically, and we had to go to in-kind donations to to meet that 10% match. We will likely, even with this slight increase, we will still probably have to do that. Meaning we'll have to go to like office space in the jails, things like that, that we look at in-kind donations. Um, so I also just want to highlight a few of the piece of data that you have in front of you. Over 120 individuals from King William during fiscal year 2021 received a comprehensive needs assessment, basically a behavioral health assessment. That's a significant increase. And we had a 30% increase over the previous years of individuals from King William receiving psychiatric services and about 40% increase of individuals receiving mental health outpatient services. I also want to point out that the wage impact on the county, that being the individuals that we employ that reside in King William County, is also increased by about $120,000 over last year. It's over $776,000. So I point out just a couple, well, one good thing, our mission statement, we do have a new mission statement which I think really embraces what we do, promoting well-being, one individual, one family, one community at a time. Just a couple other things about what we do with your money. We do have a serve the subsidized individuals, that being the individuals who do not have insurance, who receive services on a sliding fee scale. That increased about 1% over last year. It's 35%, which is compared to our other counties, it's relatively high. The other ones are in the 20%, 20% top. But also I want to raise up other things that we do with the local monies that aren't really designated. We, we support our staff in being trained in critical incident stress management. That means that they're available to go to the community, primarily the schools, when there's a significant, a critical event such as a suicide of a student or a teacher. In fact, we did come to West Point this, a few months ago to provide some services to them. So that's just so you know that we do provide other services because we want to serve our community, not just the services that are designated by the behavioral health field, by the department.
Do you get involved at all in the Marcus bill?
Yes, I was going to bring that up, but I figured my five minutes was up. So yes, we are very much involved in that. As you may know, it's meant to be a joint venture between mental health and law enforcement. And we have had many staff attend the monthly meetings and help plan the monthly meetings along with Mr. Kite and law enforcement to help develop protocols. That's a simple way of putting it for all 10 counties, which is a major undertaking, to say the least. We'll see what the legislation comes out of the General Assembly this year. So with that said, I'll stop now and open your questions.
I think with your recent presentation a few weeks ago.
Excuse me?
You gave us a presentation a few weeks ago, didn't you?
I did. Probably a few months ago I gave a presentation. Yes, time does pass.
Anything on this one?
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Bay Aging, Bay Transit, Mr. Goode and Mr. Pollak.
Yes, you have copies of these already?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening. I am Tinsley Goode. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Bay Aging and Ken Pollak, Transit Director, will be joining via Zoom.
Hello.
There he is. Um, as you know, Bay Aging is the area agency on aging and community action agency serving the Middle Peninsula, Northern Neck, Virginia. And I would also like to recognize our board member from King William, longtime board member Reverend Maria Harris, who we're very glad to have and has done so much for our board. I will talk about the aging and housing requests and then turn it over to Ken for the transit request. In 2023, Bay Aging is requesting level funding for our aging services, which include meals on wheels, home care hours, information and education, housing and other services to help citizens of all ages live independently in their communities. The funds of $7,880 for aging services and $3,440 in support of the Housing Choice voucher program of course do not stand on their own, but rather enable Bay Aging to draw down the much larger state and federal resources in support of these programs. And the impact sheet that you have a copy of shows this very dramatically and how we leverage those funds to provide these services to the more than 900 citizens who received them in the last year. I'd also like to mention, and this was in the letter, that we are, have launched a new program in support of caregivers addressing the growing caregiver crisis experienced in our community, which is a national issue. And the interventions that we offer locally include professional telephonic counseling services and a full-time employee to conduct outreach and awareness activities across our service area, and these are being provided by funds from the Bay Aging Foundation with no, no local funds required. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pollak.
Hello, everyone. I can't turn my video on, which is probably to your advantage. So I'll just, can everyone hear me okay? Okay. First of all, thank you for 20 years of support. We've been working with King William since October of 2001. This has been one of our most challenging years by far. COVID concerns have seen higher rates of COVID infections, driver shortages that have led to significant overtime to keep our service going, higher prices for fuel and parts, and wage increases in order to remain competitive in the job market. In spite of that, we're really pleased that our ridership in King William has reached near pre-COVID levels. In FY21, we provided 5,255 rides compared to 5,582 in 19, which was our last pre-COVID year. So we're, we're almost up to where we were pre-COVID. A lot of that success is what, how we've taken care of our buses and our passengers. We suspended fares, although I will let the cut out of the bag. We are going to reinstate fares in April. So we will be collecting fares starting again in April. We provide free masks and sanitizer to the riders. We built Plexiglas shields around the driver's area, and we installed Plexiglas behind each seat in the passenger area to protect our passengers. We also did a marketing campaign to make people aware of all the safety precautions that we've done. And we believe that that's one of the reasons why we've been able to see more and more riders increase in FY21. We have our new Freedom Program that is at no additional cost to the county through federal funding that offers rides to seniors and people with disabilities who need access to mostly medical services outside of Bay Transit service area. Mostly, we're taking people to medical services in Richmond and VA Hospital in Richmond. We did 333 new Freedom Rides in, for New King, for King William residents in FY21. This year, we are requesting $28,297, which is a 3% increase over last year. And this is due mostly to the aforementioned labor and fuel increases. And I will note that in FY21, we were able to access CARES Act funds specific to public, to transit, and that allowed us to waive the local match requirements in FY21 entirely. Thank you for your time. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What, what are the fares going to go to?
The fares are going to return to what they were, which is $2 for a one-way trip and 50 cents for around the town of West Point in the bus that does the fixed route around West Point.
Okay, now you're asking for 28, 298 from each jurisdiction, but doesn't West Point have their own line that runs just in West Point?
For four hours a day. That's part of the, the whole arrangement is there's, it's a two-bus system.
Part of this?
Yes, it's, West Point contributes 28, 297, and with that, four hours a day, the bus, one of the buses circulates around West Point. The other bus continues to work in King and Queen and King William Counties.
And only one other thing, Mr. Chair, the biggest complaint I get, and I know to those people that are on board, it's very important, but seeing one or two people on that bus going all the way up King William is the biggest complaint, I just want you to know that, is the biggest complaint that I get.
Yep. It's, it's not uncommon. We travel so many miles and if sometimes the option we have is to say no to that person and then not have a ride. So, so even if it's, if it's just one or two people and we don't have a conflicting schedule, we're going to go ahead and provide the ride. We can't dictate where people go and when they, when they want to go, and that is, that is the biggest challenge of rural public transportation. There are times when it travels quite a distance with just one or two people on board, but we can't, we can't make them get on board. We can only provide the service to the folks that request it when they request it.
Yeah, I'm just passing on to you what.
I appreciate it.
And the other thing is, is I think even some of the board members in the past have asked about isn't there a vehicle that would be cheaper operating in that bus style?
And along with that is the, the concept of an Uber-style service versus big old buses hauling one or two people. And I ask that every year, so.
We are, I can tell you, we are looking at smaller Ford Transit buses. We're having some, we've, we've ordered some. They, they seat, I believe, six or seven passengers and they are more fuel efficient. We've also started a pilot project in the Gloucester Courthouse area to see what we can do with an Uber-like micro-transit service, and if it is successful, we would like to see if we can replicate it in other areas. I don't know if it'll work covering from King William Courthouse to Central Garage is a challenge because of the distances. But we are looking at some other alternatives, smaller vehicles and other alternative ways to provide the service using a smartphone application. And so it, we started that in July in Gloucester. We've got a year and a half left, I think, on the pilot project to see if it can be a success.
You mentioned a fare rate in West Point of $2 for a one-way trip. Do we have a fare rate for the rest of the county? Is it based on mileage or destination or?
The fare rate for the door-to-door service, which is outside of the town of West Point, is $2 each way. The fare rate for the bus that circulates around West Point and has fixed stops is 50 cents. So.
If you go.
One way.
I'm sorry.
Any, any trip that comes to your door and picks you up and takes you somewhere, it might be 20 miles, it might be three or four miles, that rate is $2. It's a set rate per trip, not per mile.
So if you go all the way into Richmond, it's $2?
No, that's a different program. If you go into Richmond, it's, it's $10, I believe.
So is that the $2 within the county or is that?
That's $2. Anywhere in King William and King and Queen, you can go to Glenn's and transfer and get on a bus to Gloucester or Middlesex. You could take the bus to Watts Store and go to Tappahannock. As long as you're going the same direction, it's $2, and it'll be $2 on the same direction back.
That, that's within our service area. If it's outside the service area, then that's the new Freedom Program. That's a separate rate structure.
Yes, that's correct.
So this new application you're looking at developing, does that give, would that give someone a total view of what's going where and perhaps they can jump on? Is that the intent or is that one of the capabilities that you're anticipating?
Well, the, we have the app developed. It's called Bay Transit Express, and you can download it, but it only works in a certain zone. We created a zone around the courthouse area, around the hospital and the counseling center and the Walmart in Gloucester. And so you can only use the app if you're inside that zone. And so you can see what's going on in that zone. We don't have it yet to where you could see what's going on in King William County at this point. Where, there is technology out there and we, we are looking at new software for our entire service area that would hopefully allow more people to schedule using a smartphone and to see where their buses are, how far away it is from them. We don't have that yet, except for in that small pilot project in Gloucester right now.
Is there another piece of this, sir? I have a question about the mental health and counseling services you talked about.
Sure.
Is there more to this or?
Uh, no, I just wanted to mention that we are, we have, we have a telephonic support that we are paying for. It's a, it's through the Benjamin Rose Institute, which we source as being one of the industry leaders that people can call. Once, once they call us and ask for help, if they, if it seems like that would help them as, as a caregiver, we refer them there and they can participate in that. It's a $350 fee that we pay for them to do that.
And that's not part of your budget?
No, no, I just wanted to mention that as, as a public service.
The question was going to be about duplication of the previous speaker, for example, our, our social services director and if there was any duplication.
Well, it possibly, but this is directed specifically to caregivers and, and those that are primarily with loved ones with dementia.
Mr. Ashcraft, do we have the, we have information that we put out on the, on the website regarding this?
I don't believe specifically for that. If anything, you can give us.
Yeah, will do. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we talked about that last year. You had really nothing in place at that point.
We were, we were looking for anything we could find, and now we have a very, well, it's specific, it's more specific than it was last year. Last year, we, we had a, an intern who was doing some research and gathering community, some, had some community meetings about what the needs, kind of mapping the need. And now we have this, we have a full-time employee that is performing outreach and, and community engagement around this issue. And then we have this, the Benjamin Rose Institute fee tuition coverage that is, is a 30 to 60-day, unfortunately, it's only via the telephone, but it's an engagement that people can talk to a professional counselor and to help them, you know, walk through their issues with respect to caregiving a loved one.
Okay, for the caregiver?
For the caregivers.
I wondered how you can go on with that. I have dealt with the dementia and those things, and they just don't understand. But you couldn't, that counseling really not for them for the caregivers.
It's for the.
You have sources of where they can seek other help in that counseling, do you know?
Well, this is, this is a specific intervention that's evidence-based, but these, if you, if you, if you come through our intake and you say, yes, I want to do this, then we give you the information. You call and say, I was referred by Bay Aging. And then you, you start an interaction with, with a professional counselor via the phone. And then they, they send us the bill and, and we pay it. But it is for, it's for the people who are, who spend, you know, the bulk of their time caring for a loved one, and not necessarily with dementia, but most of them are loved ones with dementia.
That's a big need in other aging mental issues.
Right.
Any other questions?
All right. Thanks very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. My next question.
Can I grab him one more? One thing, and you don't have to go all the way back up here. It's just been presented to the other jurisdictions already.
Uh, well, our, our full-time employee is, is performing outreach around the service area, but when I've done all these, I've actually.
No, no, I meant in for the funding that you want from each jurisdiction, has it been presented to all the lookout?
Yes. So let me, let me be clear, that, that, the program we're discussing has nothing to do with your budget.
And then that's what I'm, let's forget that. Let's come back to the budget. Has the budget request been presented to all the lookout?
Uh, not, well, in, in writing, but, but we, you guys are like third on the list of all the the in-persons. So we, they conclude by the end of March, beginning of April.
Any rejection?
Not so far. But I mean, it's as, as your Finance Director was saying, it's all, nothing is set yet. So it's whatever, whatever comes out of your budget deliberation and the ultimate final budget, those are still to be determined in every locality, as far as I know.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, next we have the Bay Consortium Workforce Development Board. Ms. Jackie Davis.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Jackie Davis, I'm the Executive Director for the Bay Consortium Workforce Development Board. We have oversight of workforce development services provided to both job seekers and businesses. We have a 16 jurisdiction that, that we cover. For businesses, that's what we are seeking funding for to help with the businesses in the, in our area. For businesses, some of the services that we can provide are incoming worker training, on-the-job training, apprenticeships, customized training. We can also refer them out to our partners and some other resources that we have. We can, we also, in trying to be more proactive and engaging with businesses, we want to help determine the current and their emergence, emerging workforce needs, connecting them with K-12, CTE, our local community college, and other training providers to help provide, help provide them the services that need, that they need. In the past, we have done some incoming worker training in King William County. We had, it was a couple of years ago, 45 individuals that we upskilled. The cost of the training was around $50,000, and we were able to reimburse the business $23,000. Currently, we're looking to upskill with the same business, 15 individuals at a cost of about $22,000, and we'll be able to reimburse them half of that at about $10,000 or $11,000. I think this is the first time that the board has ever asked for funding from the localities. It's the first time that we have ever presented on this. Now, if anybody has any questions?
This, this training that was part of those were, I guess, current West Rock employees?
Correct. That's in, our incoming worker training.
Has any thought been given to maybe reaching out to Nestle Perrin and see what they need so far as technical skills?
Yes, we have had some, some of our partners have had conversations with them and working on figuring out exactly what they need.
Is that 25% per capita number tied to a specific number? Are you trying to replace a specific gap in state funding that you mentioned in your letter or anything?
It's, well, it's based on the 2019 census, and it was just in our, we have a very large area, a small budget. So capacity to do the things that we should be doing in the manner that they should be done is kind of tough when you're trying to provide both job seeker services and business services at the same time. And also, we're, we are responsible for convening all the state workforce partners. And also, we're, we are responsible for convening all the state workforce partners and the oversight of the Virginia Career Work Centers in our region.
Right, so what I was, my, my question was, is that twenty-five cent per capita number, basically, how did you arrive at that? It's the number that you wanted to, uh, the localities to contribute?
Right, we were, we're looking at, um, what, what we're looking at with that funding is a staff person that is totally dedicated to nothing but business services, making relate, how, doing the relationships with the K-12, CTE. So that person would either, their wages, their benefits, travel, professional development, any cost for any events that they would host and, and of course, their technology that they would need.
You would add a position for that?
Correct. Well, and we, right now, we are currently in, we're currently adding a position and what we're do, having to do is with our funding that we would generally, uh, serve the job seekers with training. We've taken back some of that funding to, um, fund that position. So what funding we get from the localities will need more funding that will go to our providers in the area to help our job seekers with their skills. And in this region, Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula, Rappahanna Community College holds that contract.
Okay, I just wanted to, some justification for the number. Super, thank.
Mr. Turner, you, you said that you have a broad area.
Yes.
And what would that, with this action person, I mean, what areas, how much would they be covering?
We cover Stafford, Spotsy, Fredericksburg, King, uh, King, George, Caroline, the Northern Neck, Middle Peninsula, excluding Gloucester and the Eastern Shore.
How many people do you have covering this?
Well, right now, it's just me, uh, doing that on top of everything else that I'm doing and we rely a lot on our partners. So with this person, this would help us streamline some of our services. So, you know, you just asked about Nestle Purino. We had two partners in one week go to Nestle Purino. And without me having the conversations with those two, they would have never known they'd have been there. So this person is also going to be tasked with streamlining and making sure we're not having duplicate visits to businesses.
Anything else? Mr. Askcraft, action item for you. We need to publish our official population. I've seen that we, tonight, we've seen two different values and I've heard three or four more with Hill Group and RKG and stuff. If we can get a published, no kidding, how many people we have this twenty, this twenty-twenty census here?
I think it depends on what source you use. And we use our labor market information, so that's where ours comes from.
Sure.
Right, then, well, super, uh, you know, and then, yeah.
Says it seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
That's a year.
That's the, that's the essential official twenty, uh, twenty.
I think we use twenty-nineteen. I think I've seen in our letter, it's twenty-nineteen.
So we're gonna, we're gonna use some more money?
No, we'll just leave it at that. We'll be happy. Are there any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully see you on the seventh or? Okay, we've scratched the legal aid tonight. We have Ms. Nina McIntyre, Comp Board Contributions.
Who's legally coming back or she couldn't make it tonight or? I'm not sure.
Good evening. This is just a summary, uh, that was in your packet to give you a, an overview of what the current budget requests are from the constitutional offices. What their budget request is that they submitted to the comp board because their budget requests for FY twenty-three were due February first. Um, and if you remember my little presentation last year on how the comp board works, the general assembly will appropriate the money to them, but the comp board will not release how they have divided that money out to the county and those departments until May first. So these numbers are subject to change. We could get more, very unlikely. But most of the time, we get less than what we've requested, but this just shows you this is what your constitutional officers have requested. And then based on that, what the difference is that the county is supplementing for their budget request.
Is the state offering a five percent increase in compensa, compensation for constitutional officers also?
I am not positive on that. I have read that, um, they were trying to include a thousand dollar bonus. Um, I'm not sure about the five thou, the five percent increase across the board. I know they did that last year.
Yeah, I just saw something, Sheriff Walton's presentation and he kind of alluded to that, but maybe that was just for law enforcement, I don't know. I'll ask him.
He's speaking tonight, I think.
Yeah, I'll ask him.
How do you, how did it come up? Who comes up with the request for the reimbursement?
The constitutional officer. They, they are the one that put it, puts it into the comp board reimbursement system directly. It's a formula that I assume the comp board, um, gives them. You can put in for the whole amount. And then depending on with the compensation board, dibbies up to the office.
What brought that question is, I mean, uh, the C O R is so much different than treasure.
It is.
And it's not a whole lot of difference between, uh, the salary.
The commissioner receives historically, they receive a little bit more reimbursement for their deputy. Up until this past year, the treasurer has received very little reimbursement. They consider it for temporary help and it is miniscule that the comp board has given to the treasurer. So it's the, the portion of the treasurer's salary that they
Right.
cover plus, um, and I can't remember the number right off the top of my head, but it's, it's less than
Okay, I just wondered, it was so much difference.
It is. They, they do give a little bit more to the tre, to the commissioner's office for their deputies and of course, Ms. Ford has many years and many certifications, so.
Anything else, Sean?
If we're lucky, we'll get what we've requested.
Historically, is there, is any way to, historically speaking, that we measured what we asked for and what we got?
Um, historically speaking, the, at least for the treasurer and the commissioner previously, because they have been doing it so long, they kind of knew what they were gonna get. So they didn't even put in a humongous request. Our folks this year have put in the request in hopes that the comp board sees the, the fl, the volume of work that they're doing. So we can only hope that they give us a little bit more money to support those activities.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just don't really tell us how much they asked for that, right? Or am I looking wrong?
It's in here somewhere.
If you, if you go into, um, Natasha's, um, details in the back for each one of these.
Yeah.
There's, there's a comp board twenty-three to the side and then comp board twenty-two underneath. I just gave the broader review in mind. So that shows compared to last year, what the differences for this year.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Karen Green of Fumphauser.
This is when I'm gonna step in and just give you a quick summary of all the constitutional officers' requests. Um, one that I wanted to do is kind of bullet point some things and kind of just get the conversation started. So when they are in front of you, if you do need to speak with them, you can kind of have an idea. Um, and regarding the comp board, the reason why we're kind of bringing that to you guys this year too is, is what we're noticing when we budget for, um, the revenues to be expected from the comp board. We're trying to keep up with that better now where we're saying, are we actually seeing those revenues that we budgeted to cover those expenditures that we thought we were gonna have? So that's why we're actually asking this year, the constitutional officers actually tell us, what did you request? So that's what we're going to base our revenue from the comp board on. And then also give you the better picture of this is what you'll be having to, you know, supplement to. So in the agenda packet is a summary of the requests received from our constitutional offices for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. We've included information regarding comp board funding for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Also included is the comp board actuals as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Actuals for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two adopted budget and the rest, the requested amount are listed for comparison. Narratives submitted from each office are also included in tonight's packet. All salary requests for the staffing of our office includes a one, one-point-five COLA and two percent merit, merit increase unless otherwise noted. I will briefly review some key items requested for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for each office. Clerk of Circuit Court, few significant budget changes are planned for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. A pay increase has been requested for the deputies of the clerk's office. The clerk has allocated prior year funds from previous clerk's salary to the deputies for the pay increase. The goal is to preserve the very competent and professional staff. Hospital medical plan increased due to increased particip, participation of health plan. Professional services increased due to audit of public accounts audit. Cost is based on the scheduled APA audits. They don't come every year, so that's why you'll see that we only budgeted six fifty this year. And it's about twenty-five hundred is what they charge us. The treasurer's office, major significant request includes fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars increase in full-time salaries. The treasurer has requested this additional amount in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget to align more accurately with staff roles and responsibility of positions. The breakdown for the increase amount is four thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty increase for the treasurer's position and forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-nine dollars increase for full-time deputies. Commissioner of Revenue, the commissioner is not requesting two assessor deputies at, as was budgeted for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, but is instead requesting the existing one assessor deputy position along with twenty thousand dollars for part-time staffing. The commissioner of revenue has requested increase for staff based on the position and performance of staffing. A total of twenty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars is requested. The breakdown for the increase is two thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven increase for commissioner and twenty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four increase to full-time deputies. Professional service increase for assessment of new construction from January to June twenty-twenty-three. Maintenance service contract increase for vision based on contract annual increase. Advertising increase for advertisement of reassessment V O E hearings. The sheriff's office, salary increase to bring in line with paid classification for county public safety departments. Overtime increase to accommodate staffing for court appearances and holiday coverage. Salaries for part-time court staff to accommodate the increase in court days and hours. Workers' compensation increase based on the actuals for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Payment to training academy increase based on annual dues increase of twenty percent. Mobile commu, mobile computer communications increase for software licensing and mobile data for sufficient mobile CPUs. The animal control department, which is under the sheriff's office, reflects a decrease in part-time labor. E nine-one-one, salaries increase to hire additional dispatch staff to handle the increased workload. I do apologize, earlier in the budget work that we had presented to you, I did not notice that the sheriff had requested two dispatchers in his narrative, so I apologize for that when we presented the new position requests a couple of weeks ago. Hospital medical plans increased due to increased participation in health plan. Office supplies increased to purchase wireless headsets. Currently, dispatchers are holding the handset while talking to a caller and talking on the radio often at the same time. Commonwealth's attorney, Commonwealth's attorney has requested a salary increase of fifty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. The increase is based on five percent cost of living for all staff, five thousand dollar increase in V Stop grant for the deputy Commonwealth's attorney and hiring of a new position of full-time records assistant. In the current fiscal year, the records assistant is a part-time position that was originally planned to assist with information processing and management, addressing the increased information provided to the office as a result of law enforcement body cameras, new criminal discovery rules and general rise in caseloads for that office. It has since been identified as a full-time position need to handle the workload and responsibilities the position, the position is taking on. There's also a hospital medical plans increase due to the increased participation in the health plan.
You're a part-time person in that position now?
Yes, currently, we do have a part-time position.
And what was the figure of increase you said?
The total increases for the, um, the Commonwealth's Attorney this office is the fifty-three, six-eighty-six. Five thousand of that, though, we did receive five thousand more even in this fiscal year. It goes towards the deputy commis, uh, Commonwealth's attorney salary. So part of that is her five percent plus that five thousand additional funding.
Reason I ask, my, my figure on this sheet that I have here in the package was fifty-one.
That's subtracting the five thousand.
Yes. Thank you. So what, what we're hoping for now is we've kind of given you a rough view of what they're, what the requests have been. So at this point, we'll just go ahead and as the agenda reads, we'll bring them forward. If you have any questions, you can ask them.
We're looking good, right?
Okay, now, Ms. Fumphauser.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. As Ms. Dronland said, my budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three leaves a full-time position vacant and requests funding for part-time help. This is what the intent to hire a full-time assessor in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. I have three goals for my office which will justify my budget request. I would also appreciate confirmation from the board that I'm moving in the right direction. All three goals will enhance revenue for the county and more equitably distribute the tax burden among county residents. The first goal is to do everything possible to assist Pearson Appraisal Service deliver successful reassessment. The code requires real estate tax rate be reduced to produce no more than a one percent increase in revenue after general reassessment. Or the board must advertise a tax increase. Every year, the value of real estate increases due to new construction and subdivisions. Subdivisions increase value because a home site is added to each new parcel. I track the value of new dwellings in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. This year, I also keep detailed records of the increase due to subdivisions. I have plans waiting to be entered for central processing section two B, which will create ninety-three new parcels. This will add two-point-six million dollars to the real estate book. This year, Pearson Appraisals assessing new dwellings and all building permits. The value of permits will also be tracked. This is very important. And after the real estate assessment, all the real estate in the county increases from ten million to twenty million. But four million of that increase is due to permits, new construction and subdivisions. The, uh, the, um, the equalization rate will be calculated on the six million dollar increase and not a ten million dollar increase. So it's very important to keep these records. Um, the second goal is to create an assessment office. The commissioner of revenue office has only been staffed to assess permits for new dwellings. A detached garage built in two thousand fifteen has now been assessed or taxed for eight years. I believe this is part of the reason the board wants to create an assessment office. Ten years ago, permits for room additions or garages may have been minimal. However, as the county continues to grow, these type of permits can add significant value to real estate. Assessing all permits is also more equitable for all county residents. The other reason to create an assessment office is due to the rising cost of the general reassessment. The current reassessment contract is over three hundred thousand dollars. There are only five companies certified by the Department of Taxation to perform general reassessments. With so few bidders, King William will have few options when it comes time to choose a contractor for the next general reassessment. The cost of starting an assessment office within the commissioner revenue office will be considerably less expensive than creating the office and hiring a certified assessor at a minimum cost of a hundred and ten thousand per year. The Department of Taxation will certify an assessor in my office after that individual passes the required classes. The third goal is create a compliance department. This is where my twenty-seven years at the Department of Taxation will be extremely valuable. Currently, any enforcement results from the citizen complaint. I receive numerous reports from the Department of Taxation. I receive information pertaining to who opens or closes a sales tax account or who files a Schedule C. This information will be used to obtain business licenses or remove vehicles from receiving PPTRA. A vehicle used fifty percent, uh, over fifty percent for business. A vehicle used 50%, over 50% for business is not eligible for PPTRA. If these vehicles are removed, Kingland could have a higher PPTRA rate than 27%. This also addresses a problem of fairness. Once it is known that Kingland is enforcing compliance of the business license regulations, there'll be an increase in voluntary compliance. People do not want to be audited. In my budget narrative, I justify the salary increases based on their classification and salary range allowed in each classification. A portion of the lower salaries in my office resulted from previous percentage salary increases being based only on the one half percent of the salary paid by the county and not the half paid by the comp board. The goals for my office are ambitious and cannot be achieved with data entry clerks. I must have a trained professional staff without turnover. I had some restless nights hoping a member of my staff would not apply for the secretary position across the hall just for a few thousand dollars extra a year. Thank you for your consideration. I have three full-time employees. Last year, I was authorized for four full-time.
So for one employee, you are asking a salary increase of approximately close to 12,000. A second employee, somewhere around 7,000 salary increase.
These are all within their salary range for the classification and comparable to other positions within the county with similar duties.
Maybe this is a question from this back end here. Is it unusual to spread a pay increase over quarter or semi-annual? Was it all done at one time?
Usually, if we're going to spread something, we usually tie it to certain milestones. If it's a certification, you know, completion of a certification, then you get extra now.
So has it been, have you completed any more certifications?
Barbara Ford is a certified master deputy. I must be a commissioner, a member of the Commissioner Revenue Association for three years before I can be certified as a master. And I have to do a bunch of stuff, but I have to be a member, so I can't be certified yet. I've enrolled my other two deputies in the career development program offered by Walden Cooper Center, and they, you know, so they can become master deputies also.
So the state compensation for your salary is 81,617. Is that projected? Or does that sound right or am I looking at this wrong?
No, I think for this past year, they pay 75,000 of my salary in the county supplement.
I'm sorry, this is a request, okay.
Yeah.
We gave an increase, correct?
What?
We gave you the increase when we first came in.
Yeah.
You restored the increase that you had voted on the previous year.
Well, with the previous people there.
Yeah. Well, not, not all of it because they were both masters.
Right.
So, I mean, like for my own salary, I didn't ask for an increase other than whatever you give, if everybody in the county is getting 3%, I want 3%. If everyone's getting 4%, I want 4%. But on my whole salary, not the $4,000 supplement paid by the county. And in the future, I want any increases based on the whole salary of my deputies, not just the half paid by the county and not the comp board. That's how that position in my office, you know, I think got so out of whack with other positions like the finance department or the GIS person. You know, Barbara Ford gives all the information for the GIS person to do their job.
Are your employees on the same paying classification plan? They are, okay.
Yeah.
Then I think, you know, as we advance the discussions on this request, what I think would be helpful to us is if we could see where we have other employees with similar terms of service in, you know, identical pay bands to see, you know, what the discrepancy actually is and try to give us an idea there of, you know, are we?
I do have that information. I don't know if the classification, I think deputies, like Commissioner Revenue deputies have like their own classification with their own range, but the duties of other positions in the county are similar and, you know, within their pay band.
Right. So I think, though, we need to try to pin it to something that's, you know, justifiable and makes sense.
Okay.
I certainly understand that all of these employees do, you know, do a tremendous amount of work for you, but I think we need to have some type of justification if we're going to look at giving them this type of increase when we're not alleviating compression elsewhere or we're not doing, you know, these types of big increases on, you know, other sides of the house.
What years of experience? And you, I don't want you to name the people, but you got three in there with you, right?
Yeah.
What are?
Ms. Bergeran started in July, so she's been here a little over eight months. Ms. Aiden's been here 15 years. Barbara Ford has over 25 years. And she has been a valuable resource. Her institutional knowledge and knows what's going on. A lot of things aren't written down and we don't have a lot of information anymore. And she just knows things, knows where to find things. She's really been a tremendous resource and I still have a lot to learn from her because things don't all, you know, come up. Something comes up and hasn't come up before and she'll know because she's had it before.
Where can she go from where she's a master deputy? Where can she go from there in her career path?
That's, that's it. Yeah. I mean, if you're certified as a master, that's all. We could have my job and she didn't want it. See how smart she is?
Yeah, that, that information would be, if Travis requested, would really be helpful. You know, it's just, you know, if you give that kind of raise and then you have other employees that are not getting that, you know, that's, that would be tough to look at.
But I mean, a big part of the compression has been how percentage increases has been calculated in the past. And the new position in the planning department started off at over 37,000 a year.
Well, right. And again, if we look at and we could see, you know, compression issue mixed with, you know, some merit in there that we could, you know, we could probably.
I'd do more comparison over the duties being similar, like with the different classes, what people are being paid.
Right.
Yeah, I understand what you want. I can get that information.
Is it an apt comparison, but I think it needs to be done.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll give you the information you need. Absolutely, I can do that.
And the next budget meeting is when?
March 2nd.
March 2nd. You'll be able to get that by then?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can email it all to you, right?
Either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Sheriff Fulton, clarify, do you want a list of all the employees that are in that classification so you can compare it against the commissioner?
Well, I think it's, you know, again, it's, it's hard to justify $4,000 a year of your pay increase unless you're alleviating some type of issue like compression or, you know, raises, well, if this, I'm just going to define compression another way, but that's really where we are with, with that. So we need something that can really show us if there is another position in a department that has either, you know, she's contending similar duties or if, you know, the pay bands are similar, similar enough, if we need to do some adjustments to be fairly compensating the individuals in our office.
Okay.
You know, in addition to whatever, you know, the merit would be.
Okay.
Because again, that's a pretty steep jump to justify when you're only doing it in one department. If this is a fact, you know, we've done compression alleviation before, you know, across departments, but that's been a few years. And, you know, perhaps we didn't address it in her office at the time. It's been, been long enough ago that I couldn't tell you that, you know, if we did or we didn't. So that maybe some lingering issues that we need to address, but I think we need to understand. Does that make sense or am I just talking? Okay, all right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And did we include them at that point? Do you remember?
I was, I was just pulling it up to see, I know there were several people who had been here quite a few years that we did a compression adjustment for, and I can't remember.
Okay.
Well, in the Commissioner's Office, Mrs. Ball has retired too, probably when all that was going on, she had a lot of seniority.
But we do, you did say we have one that's 25 years, right? I understood. And I think, gentlemen, we're going to be looking this across the county and not just in one department, you know?
Well, then we need to, to do it. Then it doesn't make sense to do it one department at a time.
No.
You know, then we need to do, you know, some type of compression.
Yeah, well, that's, that's going to be, those requests were a little bit, well, one of them is like 23% wage increase.
Right.
And we certainly can't afford that across the county, I don't think.
Not saying we could by any stretch, I'm just saying that if we, if we discover that this is a more broader problem than this, you know, if we discover that this is just an unaddressed issue within our office that historically has not been addressed and we need to, then it's a conversation that we can probably advance and it's worth having. But if it's, if it's not isolated or if it's not justified, then we need to look at it, you know?
Ms. Mackey, she could find out, people have been here over 25 years, are the bottom 50% of the pay bands, who are those people? Or is it only the people in my office? So that is true.
Um, well, I think if we identify that that's a big problem in your office, it's worth looking more broadly.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next with Bancroft, Treasurer's Office.
Good evenings, good to see you all. Do you have any questions for me? I pretty much, you know, Natasha has covered most of everything from my department, but if you do have some questions, I'm happy to answer those. If you have questions about my salaries, if you'll notice that I am doing away with the part-time position and have gone just strictly three full times. I also want to move one of my deputies to chief deputy treasurer, which I've not had since a year now. So do you want to make that adjustment?
What, what type of seniority do they have?
One will be, one was three years in November and one is two years currently. And then, of course, my one just hired for full-time in September, I think.
So this, we're looking at a $46,909 increase for those, those employees?
So that is to move one to chief deputy treasurer.
All that's not for that one individual.
No, that is correct. No. And that's just to get them in line with their responsibilities and duties. You know, they do have to be deputized and they do have access to very highly sensitive information that is not for public, you know, to dispense to public, no one else is supposed to know items likewise in the Commissioner Revenue's Office. She's got, you know, her deputies are privy to certain information that no one else has information to. So it's a confidentiality that we have. You know, they handle cash every day, they handle credit card transactions. You know, there are other positions that have come available that some of my deputies have expressed interest in because they do pay more and I'd like to alleviate that as well. We do really need to get up to par and this would bring all of my deputies into at least just the mid-level of their pay grades. They go above and beyond in what they do, but they are, like I said, in charge of very confidential information that not others are responsible for outside of, you know, my office, Commissioner Revenue, and likewise the, you know, Tina Glazier's area too, you know, Clerk of Court. We are all in charge of highly confidential information and that is worth a lot. I would hate to lose any of my deputies.
If, if, I would like to see the salaries as they exist now and what they would be with the, with this increase.
It's not a big increase. Not, but yes, I can provide you that. I gave, Nita will help me with that for sure, too.
Compensated compared to state, other counties, what are we trying to get them?
Just into the mid-level of the, what the comp board says that they should be making.
Not as local policy or anything.
That's the comp board's guidance.
For two and three years, sir?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, because you've got different levels of deputies. You've got deputy one, deputy two, deputy three. I'm not sure if there's a deputy four, and then there's your chief deputy treasurer as well.
How do you attain that? Just your promotion?
Oh, as far as if they're deputy, yes. Yeah. And then also what certifications, you know, that they are taking as well. Like one of my girls just finished IRMS today, so she's now. It's for, it's for DMD, that she can access all information on any person that we need to DMV.
Those certifications, actually, some of that increase would come from the state, state comp board.
Well, I just completed my comp board budget and I, I am not certain, but I do think based on what I've provided to them that I will be getting an increase from them because they have stated that I need one person whole. And so I'm anticipating some money from them. We're processing a whole lot more than we ever have. I'm probably not going to go back to the lockbox procedure. So we process every single payment that came in, whereas before the lockbox in Maryland would process that. And so I'm hoping to get scanners and QCR readers so that we can make that process a little more streamlined as well. But I'd like to keep that in-house, which saves us money from having to pay a third party to do that. So I'm saving money in that regard as well.
Yeah, we hear a lot, I think all of us hear complaints about that Maryland drug.
Nobody likes it. And I would really just like to not use a lockbox if at all possible. So I think I can do that.
It's the same request for me. If we could look at where, you know, where people are now, years of service, responsibilities, and just try to compare that to what we're dealing with, what we're only within the organization.
Yeah, and I'd like to also just ask that you all do keep in mind that, you know, these are, you know, they're deputies. They are, they are sworn, they take an oath that they will perform their duties, like I said, because they are in charge of very valuable information. So it's not like just necessarily, you know, an administrative position. They have way more responsibilities than just your, you know, average position of similar.
Right. And I think once we have kind of that, that information, again, I think that'll just advance the conversation.
Sure.
Talk about, you know, what, what, what makes that, you know, the distinction. I just think that that's probably the baseline of how we talk about this going forward is understanding where you guys are, where we are, and, you know, try, try to address it in a way that is justifiable and is, and is fair to everybody in the building.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get that to you for sure.
Okay, anybody else? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff Fulton.
Good evening, gentlemen. I think Ms. Jerrylin did a really good job summarizing a lot of the information that I was going to give you tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Just a few things and I'm going to answer Mr. Garber's question about.
You heard me, you were, I thought you were ignoring.
No, no, I wasn't going to yell out from the back of the room. I thought I'd give you, give it up to the, to the fan a little bit. But I believe your question was about the reimbursement.
Yeah, 5% compensation for constitutional offices.
So. You know, early on, the governor and his proposed budget had, for law enforcement, I don't remember about the other folks, oh, 20% increase. Well, the last thing I saw on, in the House was a 4% and I think the Senate was a 5%, so I'm not sure where, where it's going to be after that. So it got watered way down from the 20% now to 4% or 5%. So that is a, it's a concern that we, we've had for a long time. I mean, in law enforcement today, it's very difficult, as I told you guys last, last week, very difficult to fill these positions. Salary is a big deal. You know, I mentioned last week, we just can't, we can't just throw money at, we need money, we need, we need to increase these salaries, but we, we need to do something else to help with that. A few years ago, we submitted a career development plan, you know, and the board approved it, but we've been funded. So we, we have a career development plan that we came up with that would give our guys stages to go through to move up the ranks, but we don't have the funding to do that with, so it makes it very difficult. We have it, but we can't use it. So that's something we really, really should incorporate in, in the budget to help with the salaries anyway. We want to be across the board and I, and I heard you talking just a few minutes ago about, Mr. Mascas, about having the information to be fair about what the positions are. Mr. Mascas, about having the information to be fair about what the positions are. Uh, and, and I too have that same situation where my two captains, my, my two lead members of the department are making far less than our counterparts in the fire department. Now, my folks have been here for twenty-some years. And I'm not knocking anything on the fire department side, 'cause they do a great job. I, I, that's not my point. My point is, a new department making twelve to thirteen thousand dollars more doing basically the same position than my captain. And gentlemen, that's not right. I don't care how you look at it, that's not right. So that, that's something we, we really need to look at. I can, uh, just because of vacancy money right now, I can make that happen. I can, can fix that for this year, but I can't fix it without gonna carry it on. So I'm asking you to, to help me do that, let's make it right for, for not only them, but, uh, my records person involved. Same scenario of making far less than our counterparts in the fire department. And I, I don't know how, that's just not fair. And I don't wanna sound like a child up here screaming, well, you know, this is my sandbox, this is not right. But, but what's right is right, and, and I don't see this as being.
How long has this been?
I, I just learned about this myself within the last few weeks. Uh, I know the positions are fairly new. Of course, the fire department is fairly new to us. Uh, how, when we, uh, back a few years ago when the fire department was first being initiated, you don't remember, we were trying to, everybody's gonna be on equal footing as far as public safety. That's not how it is. It is in the lower ranks as far as that, but, but the upper, the upper leadership is not. Uh, so just.
Is it any way that we could get a comparison of, uh, the salaries of fire and EMS and, and your deputies for equal?
I can tell you right there.
Is it here?
I, I can tell you right now that the, the Assistant Chief is at seventy-two thousand. My, my captains are at sixty thousand. Battalion Chief is at sixty-five thousand. Now, I don't know what those positions do, titles, you know, a title, but the, the, the work is, you know, my captains are my second and third in command. When I'm not there, they run the show. They have each their own, own things to do that are very important to their operation, just like in the fire department, the assistant chiefs and the battalion chiefs are very important to the operation of the fire department. But is it any better than the sheriff's office? I don't think so, but I'm, I'm prejudiced a little bit on that.
Well.
But I'm just, if you wanted the numbers, I have the numbers here.
And, and I, I brought it up the other week, you know, the cadets in the fire department, in the academy are at starting salary, you know, in forty-two?
Forty-two something.
Something, and the deputies in the academy are how many thousands below that? And that's what they make during the academy, and they don't get the increase to lay it out, which I don't know how we, I might, I must have overlooked that, 'cause I don't think I'd agreed with that one.
So what kind of funding would you need to, to make it equal?
Uh, for the, for the deputies, for what he's talking about, we could absorb that right now because once they graduate from the academy, their salary goes to forty-two-five. So we can do that right off the bat. Uh, as far as the captains, I can absorb that. And I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head, but you're talking. He's got numbers in his head on this.
It's eighteen-on-one, right? Or, or both of them at six?
Twelve, twelve thousand on.
Twelve thousand one, twelve thousand other, but I'm, you know, to be fair, they, they've been employed for twenty years. So I, I think they should go up much more than that.
There's a step, America, step increase associated with number of years typically in the government.
Yeah, I don't think that when the pay for an EMS was originated, I don't think anybody ever looked at your salaries, so.
I, I'm gonna be honest, gentlemen, I don't know when those additional assistant chiefs and the battalion chief were moved in or, or the salary. I don't remember any of that until recently, and I sent it to y'all.
Yeah, that's my question, if I may have that close session, found out how much the chief made. I don't know how the chief corresponds with your chiefs. I mean, your chiefs are, you're like the top top, and then your chiefs, but the chief of the fire is top top.
Right.
How do your chiefs compare to?
My, my captains are basically his assistant chief.
And you're probably equals with the chief of fire.
Sort of like that, yeah.
Can we ask what that is? I mean, I can find out.
Just, just to.
Just to sort of compare, 'cause I thought that was strange, too. I was surprised.
I'm, I'm at one thirteen, four fifty-nine, he's at ninety-three.
Yeah.
And I've been in this position for twenty-one years, twenty-two years. And also, I'm funded by the comp board, it's supplemented by the county, uh, and I have a contract with the county for animal patrol. So that's why mine's a little bit higher because of those, those other things.
That was surprising how high it was, like you said from the very beginning, a new department, we're just starting, how that could be so high. That never came to the board, so.
Right. And look, I understand that, that recruiting people, I mean, pay is, is important, and I understand that on the fire department side as well, as a sheriff's side. But, but let's just be fair and equal. Realistically, I'd say I'd like to give them eighty each, the, the, for the twenty-some years they've been employed here to be in the position they are. Uh, they, they would be in line with other counties that are similar size to us. But it's what I'd like. You know.
So at the end of the day, two eleven, six twenty-eight is what you need to.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Two eleven, six twenty-eight is what you need?
It's an increase, yes.
An increase, okay.
Would that do what we just talked about?
Yes. Oh, okay, that's, that's what I'm gonna ask, so what was that? As far as the other, um, yeah, I don't know what other questions you may have about the budget, the, the, uh, we talked about the records manager and what they do and, and that, you know, we'd asked for an increase in that, uh, you know, the FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act, the body-on-camera, crash reports, crime reports, all these things are becoming more and more, uh, time-intensive in, in what, what that one person does. We've, we've actually, uh, ju- just because of the body-on-camera, and we knew that was gonna be an issue when it, when it came out, and I know Mr. Kite has the same, same issue. It, it's, it's becoming more and more people wanna see those videos and, and cases, uh, and any kind of interaction, you know. But it's, it's the thing that is what it, what is the norm in today's law enforcement world is body cameras. And unfortunately, along with that comes all these other things that go along with it.
Your two additional dispatchers that they would supplement?
The two dispatches, part, part of the problem is, is, you know, our workload within dispatch has increased. They may be not the, the total call thing, but the, the radio traffic in and of itself, you know, we dispatch for West Point Police, West Point Fire, King William Sheriff, King William Fire Rescue, which is all the stations, uh, you know, they're, they're very busy. And if you have an incident, you know, sometimes those dispatches, and I think, uh, someone had said, you know, they've got a phone in one hand and radio, you know, answering radio and doing all this at the same time. Uh, it's, it's very busy in there, uh, and sometimes two people on a shift is, is, is really not a good thing to have when you have all this going on. And, and we talked about the Marcus Alert. I don't know where that's going. I, I hope that the General Assembly fixes this and reduces the requirement down to, you know, at least below eighty thousand population would not qualify, as I think they've gone, pushed it on down to forty thousand now. But either way, that would be a great benefit to us because that would just add another hard, um, thing to accomplish within the communications that would probably come back for the fourth, hey, look, I need more, more to do this with because it's, it's difficult. But, you know, hopefully they'll fix that, uh, and the two dispatches that we're asking for probably would, would, I know would fix the problem we have right now. You know, as we grow, as, you know, you know, I hear all the time when the county's not growing, but you could go out there and ride these roads and look at these houses. These houses are gonna be occupied by somebody, and these people are gonna dial nine-one-one. The dot, the nine-one-one, the, the, the communication center is the heartbeat of everything we do in public safety. Everything comes right through that so, center. And, uh, we, we don't take, you know, it's not a day we shut it down, we don't close and go home at four-thirty. That, that office is operated twenty-four-seven, hurricanes, tornadoes, snow, you name it. Somebody's sitting in that hot seat in that communication center all the time.
As, as someone who can commensurate with headsets in my former life, when you have to take your shoes off to take care of all the phones and whatnot coming in, get them some headsets. Are their consoles compatible?
Yes, sir, they are.
Let's get them.
That's why we put in the funding, we need the funding.
Soon as you can.
But we need the funding, so.
They're using something similar to what we have here, right? Except we're not pushing the button.
Similarly, yeah, similar to that, it's, it's a mic that comes out and they push a button. They can push it on a computer or they can push a button directly at the microphone. Or in the old days, we had a foot pedal, like, push a foot pedal, hold two handphones, uh, some phones at the same time.
And don't forget that.
Yeah.
That you got your foot on.
Right, right, exactly, so.
We got everything we need, gentlemen. Do our best, sir.
I think, I think we know what, what we need more. Because, yeah, we, we've got some real work to do here.
One more time, that two eleven, six twenty-eight will take care of.
Well, I, you know, you asked me on the flight, I don't know that, that, I, I'm telling you what I'm asking for is, is eighty for two, that's what, two hundred and sixty plus the communication. So, yeah, I would think, I would think that would, uh, well, now, communication would be separate, 'cause that's already included in, in my request. That just came up, so.
And retention is, is leveling out, I hope.
Say it again.
Retention is leveling out.
Retention, you know, if, if we can get them in the door and, and get them to work, yeah. My turnover is slowing down, but the problem is I can't get folks in the door. You know, we, we have a, a, a testing process we go through, and we have a standard that people have to meet in order to get in this profession 'cause we don't wanna be that community that has, you know, bad police officers, we don't wanna be that. So our standard's a little high and, and we're, we're trying to get good people in here, but honestly, we're just not getting applicants to apply. Those that do apply, when they go through the testing, you know, you may have three, you go through tests, and we come out with one.
Hey, I was gonna ask you, compared to back in the day, you've been around a while, how many applicants would you have gotten back for?
For, for a small community, we would get twenty-five, thirty applicants for one position.
Where are you getting that?
I, I'm begging to get one or two. Like I said, last go-around, we had three applicants, and we waited a long time before we did the testing. But we had three applicants that went through the testing and two did not make it through. And the test is, is not really hard, we, we do a comprehensive, comprehensive test, uh, that they take. And then once they pass that, they go out and do the, the physical agility test. You know, the physical agility test is what, is basically what they have to commit, uh, comply with to get through the academy. So we just wanna make sure that we hire somebody that's able to do what they require to do in the academy. And some folks don't make it through. And then once they get through that process, you know, we, we start a background, and we do a polygraph. You know, we wanna make sure that people we're getting are telling us the truth in their, in their process. Uh, and sometimes that, that helps and sometimes it hurts them. But we, we work very hard to get good qualified people for the county, so we wanna make sure, you like, again, back to that career development, that's an important thing to have. And changing the pay scale. We're fighting, but I know last week I said, you know, we couldn't just throw money at them, and I meant that, we, we need to do more than just throw money. We need to pay raises, we need, we need to read, adjust what we're paying, uh, deputy sheriffs all, all the way across the board just to compete with the other surrounding agencies. But we need to figure out some way to get them in the door. Career development is a big, is a big draw, if they know that they can work towards, you know, if they've got a college degree or they do these certificates, anything they can do to get them to move up the ladder. You know, the comp board, you know, I, I heard the treasurer speak about, you know, getting money from the comp board. I'm, I, I say, I'm very leery about what the comp board will give you, because they will say, you're eligible for this. I've had positions available from the comp board for years, but they didn't fund them. So, yeah, you got the positions, they say you need them, but they won't fund them. So we asked for the, the money from the comp board, we, we asked for salaries, basically. They don't give, they don't give office supplies anymore, so we don't get any, any money for office supplies and nothing for vehicles. Everything is basically salary that we get from the comp board. And that's only, uh, I think right now, I did get one extra position last year from the comp board, uh, that had been waiting for a few years to get. And I saw something where, you know, we were like, two more positions this year. I, I don't know that, I don't, I don't know where we're at with that, I haven't seen any more about that, so that'd be great if they did, uh, but I'm not gonna hold my breath.
I think it was unfunded.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
Uh, who, you, are you talking about just raised the four or five percent? They are figuring on funding that.
It's, it's in the house right now, and, and, well, they just did the crossover, so I don't know what it will end up when they go to, you know, the, uh, final, was it concrete when they do that? I, I don't know what they'll end up doing.
But that was all, all constitutional officers?
It was.
And employees of consti-
Yes, yeah. And, and there was a mention about, i- in one of the versions, and I'm not sure which one was the House version or the Senate version, uh, for a thousand dollar, uh, bonus for that, but I, I, again, I don't know how that's gonna end up once it gets further down the line, it gets changed. But every little bit does help.
I've been in this business for fifty years, bonuses do not impress employees, 'cause they don't count towards anything other than that thousand dollars act and whatever you get after tax.
That's right.
Oh, because a bonus can go away the next year, and it's not tied into your salary.
No, it's not, it never is.
Yeah. I, I, I don't guess I need to mention to you guys, you know, we talked about the courts, and the courts are really becoming very busy for us, you know. Just in, in the next few months, we've got six jury trials scheduled. And that, that's, that's a lot of work for us because not only do we, you know, we have to man that courthouse, we've gotta have people there, uh, doing all those trials. I gotta pull people, make sure we have enough personnel there, and on some days, I'm running two courts at the same time, so I've gotta have people in the circuit court, folks in there. Uh, with the juvenile, the general district court. Uh, this, this, it's time-intensive on that and having personnel and pulling people off the street, uh, off a patrol to make it happen in the courthouse. And it's just becoming more and more for us to do. I, I didn't talk about the capital improvement thing with the vehicles, I think y'all, y'all are aware of that, so I don't need to go back over that. Unless you have any questions, I don't wanna miss anything. Well, that's all that I have, unless, unless, yeah, you have questions.
What is my closing point? Obviously, we've, we've gotta look at, at, at these numbers, but you had mentioned that you keep hearing that the county's not growing, and I see the same people that keep spouting that. You know, we just went through our fourth consecutive decade of double-digit percentage population growth. So, um, yeah, I mean, just a good reminder for everybody in the room to not let people who are blind to reality dictate power.
All you gotta do is get out in your car and ride the roads and look at the, the houses, you'll see it, it's there.
And that they're occupied already.
And they're occupied. Uh, the apartments up there, you know, I, I know a lot of folks weren't happy when the apartments came up, thought, oh, there's gonna be a lot of stuff. We, we don't get a lot of calls up there, but we do get calls that, you know, country people aren't used to living close to other people. So they move in their apartment, next thing you know, we get calls for loud music or like, you know, noise because they're not used to living that close to someone. You know, those are the type of calls we get in up there. But nonetheless, there's calls for service that we have to respond on. You know, and I know that, the, uh, the other section of that apartment complex, senior, the senior living, I, I don't, I'm sure that has already created some. I know for us, we've had a few calls in there, but it's also created some calls for fire rescue folks, too. So it's there.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say one thing, dealing with this, not you, go ahead, Sheriff. The funds we're talking about here, it doesn't affect me at all, so it's, it's not a conflict, that's what I'm getting at.
You willing to give up some salary?
You want me to work for nothing? Can't go down less deep.
Mr. Kite, please. Gentlemen, good evening. I, I'm, I can address both my office and the victim witness director's office that's in there. But the, the primary thing that I wanted to talk about with regard to my office is the shifting of our records assistant to a records manager position, full, part-time to full-time. I was just doing some math. Since January first, uh, there's been fifty-three days, calendar days. We've opened sixty-eight new files, so we're averaging more than a file per day to open. That's kinda what it was last year as well, maybe a little less. I, I spoke with the sheriff earlier this month and said, I know you all were busy in December and January because it's all coming to me now. Uh, and they've continued to be busy. So with every file, uh, there's reports that have to be collected, and, and we work not just with the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office is actually, quite frankly, the easiest agency for us to work with, partially because we have a great relationship. But if we ever have a problem, we just walk at the back, we, we work it out. We also work with the, uh, town of West Point who has body camera and a different, same type of reporting system, different type of system to send things to us. And then the, the really difficult agency to work with, and it's not, not the trooper's fault or the B C I's fault, it's the- Um, state police uh, are very difficult to get information from them directly. Uh, and so one of the primary tasks that, that uh, Ms. Walton, who's our, our records assistant has been doing is literally chasing information from different agencies. The emails, phone calls. She's the nasty Graham center. Uh, and apart from that, she reviews all of our body worn camera video that comes in, make sure it goes into the right file. Um, she takes notes for us because we're talking, you know, hundreds of hours potentially per week. She takes notes so that when I review the, review it, I can skip to the parts that are gonna mo- mean the most. I'm sorry?
There's a transcript from the body?
Not a transcript. No, she takes notes. She watches them and takes notes and, for example, I ask her, note every time, note where the defendant is. Sometimes the defendant isn't, isn't in the, the body cam initially while they might be looking for him, for example. Uh, she will note, you know, the defendant appears at whatever timeframe that is, so I can get to that quickly. It's just, it, when we first envisioned the position, we did not envision it being quite so much work, uh, quite frankly. And, uh, and we reached a point in the office where we really don't know what we were doing before. Uh, it, it's, it's quite a lot of work. So that, that's the reason for it. Uh, and, and frankly, we're, I think the reason the position is, is so effective is the individual that we have in it. She's, she's extremely competent. So, I did want to talk to you a little bit about comp board because that's been a discussion and I don't talk about it as, as needlewood necessarily because I'm not on the, I'm, I'm sort of on the money side, but I'm on the side of negotiating with them with the state on a regular basis. And really, what I think it, and, and let me just tell you, the comp board has a website where you can look up all of our budgets. All of our budgets from the comp board. It's SCB, as in state compensation board, I guess, uh, dot Virginia dot gov. And you can search budgets there and I'm looking at my budget page right here. And so my office, the comp board only deems certain things. And those are based on uh, works, and I can't speak for the other office because I don't know how their funding is determined. But in my office, it's determined on, and every year they do a work study where they basic, base it solely on felony cases that go to the circuit court. So everything we do in general district court, everything we do outside of court, all trial preparations, all it's all just crunched down to a certain number based on how many cases come out the other end of circuit court. Um, it's incredibly inefficient and does not capture, certainly for rural jurisdictions. And my colleagues in larger jurisdictions uh, would say that doesn't capture them, doesn't capture our work at all. What I'm doing right now is part of my job, uh, but that's never been captured by the comp board. And so, uh, as we speak, starting Monday, uh, my, the Commonwealth Attorney Association is, is funded a, a work study program, a work study. It's not a program, but it's a, it's a, we're all gonna be logging hours like we're in big law firms in, in Richmond or New York. Exactly what we do every day. Um, it's gonna be a, it, it should be interesting. I, I think we're gonna determine that we spend an awful lot of time doing stuff that's never been tracked before. And so, but that, that's coming. So they're, hopefully they're gonna have better num- better ideas of what our jobs are going forward, but, but currently what they do. So for my office, my position uh, is a statutorily defined salary, one thirty-one, eight forty-one. That's, that's mine. I receive from the county a a supplement. It's about three or four thousand dollars. And that came about several years ago when the state changed how VRS was calculated. And rather than basically give a deduction to the comp board funded positions, they mandated that localities fund that difference. And that, that's, I don't know where that statute stands now, but that's what happened there. And so earlier I was talking with uh, Ms. Glazier, the clerk of the court. And she had mentioned that, that she had taken that out of her, out of her budget. And I, I told her, I don't think they can do that. I don't, I don't think, I don't know if they've changed that statute, but I don't know that that, that that's an effect any longer. I'm, I'm certain that this Langston and, uh, and Nita would, would be able to better explain that, but I know that's what that means. And I'll, I'll tell you, I looked for my memo on that from several years ago and I don't even remember what year it was. So, so then my legal assistance position, as long as I've been there, has always been classified as an administrative assistant one. It's never changed. Every year when we fill out our budget, I hit the button to change it to something else. And then the button changes on the screen, but it's never changed. I've been here. This is my eleventh budget I've done with the state. Um, I'm certain my predecessor did the same thing. And it's, right now it's at twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. And so when we talk about a five percent uh, raise from the state, that's five percent on twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Okay? And I'll come back to that in just a second, how we've traditionally done that. Uh, the attorney position, the deputy Commonwealth attorney position in my office is classified as an attorney one, which is an entry level, just out of law school kid. She's much, much more than that. And we, we've, between the B stop grant of forty thousand dollars and this fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars, she's paid what she's worth, or, or getting close to that at least. And so the comp board is what, what you all should think about it as, the way I've been taught to think about it when dealing with them, is it's a pie. And the legislature tells them how big the pie is going to be and nothing more. And for years, for years, and I know the sheriff can speak on this too, for years, that pie didn't change. It's, it, it would change by incremental amounts, three percent, four percent, five percent. But all the comp board does then is divide up the pie. They have a certain amount of money. They divide it up based on their staffing standards and that's how it works. It's, you don't get, I, I, with respect to the treasurer, she's incorrect. They are not going to increase comp board funds. They might give them more money to spend. They might increase the size of the pie, but they're not going to all of a sudden start funding all these positions in the way that they should be funded. Uh, and at the end of all of this, our, our staffing standards that are completely unrealistic uh, for localities. And the state knows that. Uh, the legislatures know that. Our senators, our delegates know that. But this is part of passing buck down from the state down to the localities, right? That's, that's what that's all about. So it's important to think of that, that we only get comp board money for billeted spots. So in my office, just three spots that aren't even accurate to what they actually do. And then we ask the county for that supplement to make them what they are. Materials, yeah, materials haven't been offered uh, in at least fifteen years. Uh, you could budget, you can ask for it all you want. It ain't kind of, it, that, that part of the pie is never gonna grow in my opinion. So. But I just wanted to address that because there is a bit of confusion sometimes. Uh, you know, it's a reimbursement. So most of my salary, with the exception of uh, you know, benefits and things like that are reimbursed directly from the county. And the, and the comp board also has a, a small amount that is reimbursable back to the counties. Uh, back to the, the localities. Traditionally, what has happened in my office, as, as a constitutional officer, traditionally, my pay raises from my position go track with what the state does. So for example, if the state does a five percent this year, that would translate through to my position. Traditionally, that's what's always occurred. Um, and by the way, the email that I saw this, this afternoon was five percent is what's in senate committee. Four percent and a one percent bonus in December is what's in the house finance. Uh, and then there was a language which only the sheriff, I think, would understand about what they want to do with law enforcement. It made no sense to me, uh, which means it's probably not gonna happen, uh, quite frankly. That, that's generally the gobbledygook that goes along with it. But, um, so traditionally my office, that's what happens. Then my staff traditionally follows along with the county pay raises because they're, they are supplemented by the county. What happens when the comp board gives a raise for the staff is the comp, the county will eat that basically and use it, you know, to continue the, the, the structuring of the funding. So that, that's traditionally what's happened in my office. I, I don't know the other offices. I think I'm the only, myself and maybe Ms. Glazier are the only two constitutional officers that don't have any real, o- other than that VRS judgment, any real supplement from the county. Which is fine. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just explaining to you how it's all traditionally been. Um, and really what that does is it makes sure that we don't have salary compression in our office. Vis a vis the rest of the county. So all of my county employee, all of my employees are on the county pay plan and have all of those. And they fit into the, the, the numbers and things like that. So. That's all I wanted to address. I hope I explained it clearly enough. Any questions about my office? Then I can start to talk real briefly about Bostick's office.
Educational as always.
So in Ms. Bostick's office, uh, the victim witness director, let me just say, uh, we routinely receive compliments, accolades, whatever the positive words are about the victim witness director and her office. Are, I'm, I am proud that they, they are associated with us because victim outreach, witness outreach is the key to effective prosecution. Uh, you can't prove your case if your witnesses don't show up. And uh, and so they, they're really invaluable. Uh, last year, she took on a part-time person that was funded partially, mostly by her grant. This year she's asking for an increase in her, in that individual salary. This is a split with King and Queen. Uh, who, so her office is split down the middle. The grant is split down the middle, fifty-fifty with King and Queen. Um, frankly,
Even though their population is a fraction of ours?
Well, they wouldn't have it otherwise. So they wouldn't have a program otherwise. And the way that the grant is written is it's fifty-fifty split. Now, getting to your point, uh, I don't know if anyone from King and Queens on Zoom, but King William gets the significant benefit from that because the vast majority of her work is over here. She's, she is an important King and Queen and, and, but, but the vast majority of her and her assistants' work is in King William County. Uh, so we're kind of getting a, uh, I don't, I don't know if I want to advertise that too much, but, but that's, that's a benefit to the county that's significant. Uh, I don't know if the, if the, the federal government would fund one just for King and Queen because they are so small. So they get a benefit, but they're paying fifty percent. And we probably, you know, that's our benefit. So, um, so any other question?
Just going, yeah. Do we really need this part-time work? Victim witness?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'm asking.
So, um, right now, right now, what we have, I think the sheriff mentioned that we have uh, six jury trials. I think that's, we may have added one that he doesn't know about yet, but surprise. And, uh, a jury trial is witness and prosecution intensive. So just to give you an example, the same murder trial that took us a week, six days, five days and then one in May to try because it was a jury trial. Then, and the evidence was slightly different, uh, and it was two defendants. It took us a full week to try that. I tried nearly the identical case with the third co-defendant uh, last week, uh, and took a day. So it's a jury trial because of everything that goes into it, the preparation, the presentation, the uh, you know, when I try a case to a judge, we can cut to the chase significantly. And that, I mean, that's six days quicker to kind of chase, quite frankly. And so the victim witness program is, is immersed in all of that as well. Phone calls, I mean, victim outreach is vital and I, and I know that the part-time person that's there now, that's been primarily what she does. I mean, I hear her on the phone all the time talking to victims, witnesses, getting out in front of that. Because if you don't talk to people early on in a case, they won't cooperate later. And even if you do talk to them early on, you still have to keep them on board and keep contact. It's, it's, it's almost like marketing. If you, if you don't keep in constant contact, you don't, you don't get the positive outcome that you need to get in the case. So she is essential.
So we're really not paying, but is it twenty-five hundred or three thousand seventeen uh, for, for that part-time?
So. So the county side of it.
Yeah, it talks about split up top.
Yeah. So it looks like an additional, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars with a thousand dollars from the county, fifteen hundred dollars from the grant, a thousand dollars from the county. That, that's what we're talking about. If that makes sense. Any other questions? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, circuit court, Ms. Glazier.
Hello, good evening, board. Ms. Schuritzin kind of covered everything. So I don't know if there's anything or any questions that you have with me, obviously. My other elected officials have spoke on how busy we are in the circuit court. So, um, I'm mostly requesting just a salary increase um, for my staff. Um, just to get it so it is a competitive pay for our individuals that we have working for us.
How many own staff?
I have three. I have a chief deputy. Um, I have a criminal clerk and then I have a civil clerk. They will all be, we take continuing education um, through the Supreme Court of Virginia. Right now through Zoom meetings. And with their continuing education, um, the comp board also has a program for them to get them to deputy, the, the deputy status code, um, they will be called a chief deputy depending, but they have to have three years in. Um, and I only have one individual who will be qualified for that next February. So, um, with that being said, I don't think that what I have requested is unreasonable. Um, it's requesting basically competitive pay for what they are doing. And they're also learning cross-training. Um, so we can kind of have someone, if they're not there, we can have someone to cover. But any questions, staff and add?
With the increase in caseload, that equates directly as a one-for-one increase with your staff?
Yes, sir.
Just curious, did you have a presentation? Because my book, it's the exact same stuff in your section that was in Matt's section. I don't know if everybody's book's like that, but my page.
Isn't it a different packet, Stephen?
I, I did ha- I did have it in my pocket.
Okay, but it wasn't corrected. It was the stuff we had tonight that replaced all.
Yeah, the stuff that was up tonight was just stuff that was updated from that previous.
Yesterday. Oh, that was the one. Okay.
Uh, in the original packet, I think, because I think he was asking if there was a narrative because, you know, in the original packet that went out.
Yeah, I got four J is the same thing as four I. And I'm like, well, nothing matches what she's saying. It has her name on it, but it's all Matt stuff. Okay, thanks.
My same question is accreditation. So I take it from this, your salary will be one hundred, well, the clerk's one hundred and five, six eighty-four. Uh, Ms. Norman's salary was previously one, one oh nine, nine eighteen?
Yes, and I think, um, Mr. Kite, um, was speaking and I, when I originally did the budget, I was not, um, aware of the, that. I, I just wanted to cover my employees. But he has, um, that mandated statute, I, I can't remember the code. But I don't, um, I don't know. I think we'd have to look into, um, it's through VRS and it's a requirement possibly that it stays that way. So I don't know. We'd have to look into that.
Anyone else? You got it all easy. Thank you. I think, let's see. You want to start, Ms. Jordan?
I don't know what we were expecting.
Yeah, you guys just started getting numbers, numbers, numbers done now, right? So included in tonight's packet is the fiscal.
So included in tonight's packet is the fiscal year 2023 revenue projection. All projected revenue, all projected revenues presented are based on level tax rates. To prepare the revenue forecast for fiscal year 2023, staff reviews prior year actual revenues as well as year-to-date collections. The commissioner of revenue has provided forecasted assessment values for projections of the property, property tax revenue. The general fund accounts for all revenues and expenditures related to general operations of the county that are not accounted for in other funds. This fund includes most traditional local government programs such as police, libraries, fire and rescue, parks, human services, et cetera. The general fund also includes transfer payments to school, county debt service, and capital improvement funds. We can break down the revenue sources to the general fund into three categories. Chris, could you pull up exhibit A? So this is going to give you what our revenues were actual for 2021, what we adopted for 22, where we are as of February ninth. And what we're projected based on all those three things and assistance from the commissioner on the assessed values. So we can break that down into our revenues into the, for the general fund into three categories. Local revenue, which is what you're going to see up the top part. So first thing is local revenues. Real estate revenue is the largest source of local revenue for the general fund. Each penny on the current real estate tax rate, which is thirty, eighty-six cents. But when we say current real estate tax rate, thirty-eight cents countywide, forty-eight cents King William County public schools. Each penny of that yields one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred. And an estimated, estimated collectible real estate tax revenue. The projected revenue based on current tax rate would generate fourteen million for fiscal year 2023. This represents an eight percent increase over adopted budget for fiscal year 22. The growth in real property tax revenue is attributed primarily to new construction and improvements. Personal property taxes levied on vehicles and other tangible non-real estate property. Current tax rate is three dollars and sixty-five cents per one hundred, which of assessed value. Which again, we got to look at that because we have our split levy, one dollar sixty-five cent countywide, two dollars King William public schools. So if you put those two together, that's what we're getting at, three sixty-five. Projected revenue for fiscal year 2023 is five point three million, which is an increase of eight percent over adopted budget for fiscal year 22. Personal property tax revenue increase projections is attributed to an increase in book values. As everyone has seen, their personal property tax for their vehicles is just sky hot, you know, just skyrocketed. Machinery and tools taxes are leveled, levied on equipment needed to manufacture process. I'm sorry, needed in the manufacturing process. Management machinery and tools tax revenues are projected to remain the same for fiscal year 2023, to be two point one million at the current rate of two dollars and twenty-five cents per one hundred assessed value. Hundred dollar countywide, dollar twenty-five King William public schools. Other local tax consists of sales tax, utility tax, business taxes, motor vehicle license, recordation taxes, and food and beverage taxes. These taxes are projected to generate three point five million in revenues for fiscal year 2023, which is level with fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. Other revenue sources include building and planning permit fees, fines and forfeits, forfeitures, use of money and property, charges for services, recovered costs, and other miscellaneous items. Other local revenue for fiscal year 2023 budget is projected to bring in six hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eight. That's an increase of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two compared to fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. The increase is primarily attributed to the increase in revenues generated by building and planning fees collected. The second category for revenues that we can, that go into the general fund is state revenues. State non-categorical ad, quarter categorical aid revenues are those revenues raised by the state and shared with the county. The use of such revenues is at the discretion of the county. Overall, non-categorical, categorical revenues are projected to total one point five million, a fifty-five thousand dollar decrease from fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. The projections are less based on actuals from fiscal year 2021. State communications sales tax was budgeted at three hundred and five thousand for 2022, but only, we, but only received roughly two hundred and fifty in fiscal year 2021. State share expenses represent the state share of activities that are shared state local responsibility. This revenue partially funds constitutional officers and is determined by the state compensation board on an annual basis. This funding source is projected to increase by one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four over the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. The projected calculation is based on information provided by each constitutional officer. The main component for the increase in this revenue is due to significant increase in support of nearly seventy-four thousand dollars towards the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. State categorical, categorical aid includes revenues received from Commonwealth. These funds are designated by the state for specific use by the county. Categorical aid revenues include grants for violence against women, litter grant, E nine one one grant, and arts alive. Categorical aid revenue is projected to total eighty-one thousand, five hundred, a forty thousand dollar decrease from fiscal year 2022 budget. Recordation tax is no longer distributed to localities. The commissioner of revenue and clerk of courts are currently working with the state for clarification, and that's what that forty thousand is. Federal revenue is the last source of revenue for the general fund. It consists of federal funds received for specific use by the county. Such revenues usually are received on a reimbursement basis. Major categories reflect federal reimbursement for social service programs and grants for law enforcement programs. Federal aid is projected to total forty-five thousand, two hundred and two, a decrease of twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight from fiscal year 2022. The decrease is related to the SOR grant program ending coupled with an increase in social service program support revenues that in the past were categorized as funding the social service fund rather than the general fund. Can you pull up exhibit? At the request of the county administrator, several exercises are included in tonight's packet for consideration of a tax rate reduction for calendar year 2022 tax rates. Exhibit B reflects a real estate reduction option, a one-cent reduction for real estate tax, bringing that from eighty-six to eighty-five, which would change the countywide tax to thirty-seven cents. Currently, it's a thirty-eight. We would remain the same amount for the school share of that tax rate at forty-eight cents. A reduction in total revenue to the general fund for its one-cent reduction in real estate tax rate is one hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight. Exhibit C.
With, with an average home, how much would that really put back in the tax base? I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home?
Is that average anymore?
I think we looked at that the other day and it's maybe twenty bucks.
I know, it's not, I've already calculated, it's not much.
Yeah.
Where I'm getting it.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay.
So personal, exhibit C reflects a personal property tax reduction option, which would be reducing the tax by ten cents for personal property tax. So we would come from three sixty-five to three fifty-five. Countywide currently is one sixty-five. We would reduce countywide tax to one fifty-five. We'd leave the school share at two dollars. A reduction in total revenue to the general fund with a ten-cent reduction to the personal property tax rate is one hundred ninety-four thousand dollars and four, uh, one hundred ninety-four, four ninety.
And that's not, is that, you don't really know what the value of the cars are yet, but.
That's right. And that's it too. We have to be very careful. I know we do want to help the citizens with their, you know, this, the, the values increasing. But then what happens when those values come back down? And then we're in a spot where we can't move very well with, for the tax rate. So personal property. We, we kind of talked about different things where we could assist and we, we, we really think this is probably going to be the best option for a personal property.
Doing personal property.
Right.
I don't see where the real estate really puts a whole lot in person, but it may not be with certain people, even on this.
That ten cents not going to put a whole lot back in your pocket either on a personal property.
And I mean, it's got to do with, by the same population base for the most part. The only difference being some people own cars that don't own houses.
True.
Any other exercises that you would like me to run? I'm, I'm be glad to do that too, if there's other options the board has thought of that for tax reduction.
There's no, there's no and, there's one or the other, B or C, not a B and C. Correct?
We can work on that if you want to. I mean, sure, I can put something together.
What about two cents on the real estate tax work? See what that would.
We just, it, it, the important number is what a penny gets you.
Yeah.
Even more so, projected out.
We know.
Is, is what a penny gets you. You can kind of figure it from there as far as what you're doing.
And one more time, what does that penny get us? Hundred and eighty thousand or something?
For our general fund revenue, it would reduce it by a hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight.
What about school side?
I guess, I guess what you would have to do is work.
Leave their rate the same.
I'm just saying, what's a penny get you on the school side? Cause it's less.
I don't have that in front of me, but yeah, so you're right. That is total, total what, how it affects our bottom line of revenue.
Another important thing to consider when you're looking at this number down at the bottom especially is that that does not all come to the general fund side. That is, that is being split between general fund and school fund in some fashion. It's not fifty-fifty.
That's correct. Yeah. That's correct. Yes, I mean, most counties can actually take, you know, what the tax, take a, whatever the tax rate is and figure out, okay, what, how much is that? You know, process, what's the penny value? We can't do that because we're a split levy, because you're talking about two different factors where you look at it and assess, yeah.
When you gave us that exhibit A, the level tax rates, does that include all the increases that everyone's asking for? Or is that just?
This is just for revenues. So I was joking with Mr. Ashcraft today. I like this procedure where we're going, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? We kind of got to figure out what we've got to work with. We've, we've pulled in everything that everybody's asking, but now we actually know where to go from there. Cause we've got to have a starting point and I really like the direction that this goes where I can come to you guys. You guys can hear from all of the different departments rather than just us putting something in front of you. You, you can actually have one-on-one with the departments and talk to them and actually, you know, hear their perspective, you know, let them sell it to you like they need to. Better than what I could, better than what the county minister could probably. So that's, that's, I really do like this process that we get to be in front of you and put it all together. And I just feel like it is, the train is rolling down the track and.
Last year was good and this year's been even better.
Yeah.
One clarification, if you would, the cares and ARP funding are not counted as revenue or are counted as revenue?
They will be, they, if you look at the very bottom of that, we're going to anticipate four hundred and seventy-eight thousand for ARCA funds to actually go towards firing EMS seven hires that we get.
And that's the first tranche or the combination of the first and second tranche?
That, so what we're doing is anything, any expenses that we, that we're going to use ARCA funds that I've actually included in the general fund expenditures to you, I'm offsetting that to let you know that ARCA will cover that amount of anything that I'd actually been, I presented the general fund expense.
We have already spent that on the hires that's already made with, with these funds.
So this year for twenty-two, we allocate four hundred and seventy-eight, and then next year we're also doing that.
Right, but I mean, all these funds are nothing to do with the additional six that they're looking at.
Yeah, the ARCA fund, we kind of treated that as a separate budget. The only reason why I'm listing it in there is because part of the ARCA fund is funding those salaries in our general fund.
And that's.
So it has to reimburse the general fund for it.
And that'll last for three years, correct?
I think we're down to one more year, right?
It's one more year?
Yeah, I think it's one year. Yeah. And we are going to apply for the safer grant, but we do not want to actually include that with the budget preparation for 2023. If, what we want to do is actually apply for it, if we receive it, we would like to come back to the board at that point and ask for a budget amendment at that point.
Makes sense.
But yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's worth it. Again, driving the point home, we've had a lot of good discussions about split levy and what that means for the way that we, we allocate these funds. As ever, anybody looking at that number tonight thinking about all the problems we could solve with that number, again, that is not the whole picture. We talked about chicken and an egg. We've got an egg that scrambled in the shell right there a little bit because it's not the whole picture of how that money's actually allocated. It's not just one big chunk. It is two chunks with a good portion of it going to the schools the way that it sits right now. So I think it is important to know what that school penny gets us also, so that we know, you know, if we want to make adjustments where and how and what, what that means. And of course, we've yet to see anything from the schools as far as their request goes as well too, and that's going to be a big driver of how, you know, we make some of those decisions. So don't just look at that number and start doing it up to all the things that you want to do because it's not, that's not the whole story.
With the, with each exercise, I did do that part two. I did not bring it with me. I, but I do know that I always made sure to make, with the conversation Stacy Longest and I have had, I've made sure to keep, are we still going to be able to fund the schools with these tax reductions? And I'm, I can tell you, yes, we would be able to. I don't know the exact number, but that is part of my exercise too. It cha, I, wheels in motion, you know, and everything changing. When that changes, everything else changes.
So in so many words, if we decided on a rate for real estate tax, you would work the budget around that?
What was that?
If, if we decide, say, say we wanted two cents, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, two treas. But if hypothetically, we wanted a two-cent reduction in, in real estate, y'all would, you would work the budget around that?
Yes, sir.
Just curious, this clarification, again, on the exercise you did for the ten-cent reduction in personal property, you said the staff, and you decided that was the best option, but is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Not the best option overall, but when we were talking about maybe how we could assist with the, the value of vehicles increasing, that was, that's all.
Okay, that's fine too. Like I said, it's always up to us anyway. But anyway, is that number, you came up with, with that alleviate? Or as we leveled the, the regular budget, would that count as level funding for the personal property? With the kind of, do we have an average of how much is all the cars seem to have gone up? Is that, is that, was that a factor? I mean, do we have a number that comes up with, like I said, and everybody?
If you go back to exhibit A, it'll try to give you an idea. That is the one.
Are you asking how much that would help an individual taxpayer?
Exactly. Just trying to level this out so that every taxpayer would be the same as you.
That's difficult.
Very dependent on their property.
Well, if you look at, my, my tax bill is a great example. You know, I had a twenty fifteen F-150 and a twenty thirteen CRV. And the CRV basically just changed it all. The truck went up huge.
Right.
So, you know.
So we couldn't do it across the book.
I mean, you could, but you wouldn't be benefiting everybody identically if that's what your question was.
Yeah.
Cause there is a variation in what vehicles increase and by how.
Mine's the same thing. Mine's, someone is so old, there's no tax and the other one's almost new.
Precise, but I mean, you have two that are effectively the same age and you have one that's had a twenty percent increase and one said.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, but this is, we're moving in a positive direction, I'd say.
Um, I can also offer, I know, um, I had talked to Betsy at Prince George. And she, I could do, present two options for you. I think that's what she had done in, when she was kind of in this kind of a situation. So what I could do is actually present, here's what we would do with the expenditures with these, the revenues for the ten cent. So I could do an eighty-six cent budget for you for real estate, an eighty-five cent budget for you. And then I could do the ten cent reduction. I could do three budgets for you if that's what you wanted to do. And then you could decide that way. Whatever you guys want to do, I would be more than happy to work it for you.
I'd always like to see a variety of options just to make sure that we're covering.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I think a big, a big factor is what's been exposed tonight.
Right.
How much, how much salary? How much, how much salary are the board, how far are you going to go with, with all that you've been presented?
I don't think any of those have been included in your estimates, right?
This is just a revenue reduction, this has nothing to do with requests.
No, but I'm, I, I meant on what she was figuring, what, what we could cut. He said we can do schools, but none of this was included, will be increased.
True enough, and so I, I think that it, it's, A, we've, we've talked about that we wanna look at, you know, from an HR perspective, do, do we have compression issues? But I think that before we decide on what, how many cuts and how many different ways, we wanna look at the cuts, we might wanna look at where we're lining up with expenditures and, and what of those expenditures we think are worthwhile, and then we can look at what's left over out there.
So with what I have presented to you, regardless of, I mean, as you see, it, it's minimal, the amount of money that the revenues is, that will, it will reduce. The schools, we, we will be fine with, with whatever option you choose. We are about, I did some numbers before we came in here this, this evening, and we're probably about a hundred thousand dollars where we would have to do some cuts with everything that was presented to you tonight.
At current rates?
I'm sorry, not a hundred thousand, it was nine hundred thousand, it was nine hundred, sorry.
Right, at the current rate.
At the, what was presented to you and with what every department has requested. That's before the County Administrator has touched anything.
So again, demonstrative of the, of the effort that would be required before we start really, um, talking about what rates we wanna reduce, we've got the reality of the fact that, um, you know, eight percent revenue growth is great, but we've got seven and a half percent year-over-year inflation going on right now, so, um, it's, it's a blessing for sure, but it is, it is also not a, uh, not an all, all-saving balm here to solve all of our problems in one fell swoop. We've still got some tough decisions we've gotta make before we start giving it all away.
Is there any thought at the legislative mother, level, governor's level that this two billion surplus may filter down?
You see, they've already figured out how not to spend it, they've already gone from a five percent raise to a four percent raise, but maybe a bonus, you know, it's, it's.
And these values are set values for twenty twenty-one also too, so that, that, these are numbers that we have currently, so it could change.
So the spreadsheet is already done, all you have to do is change the rate and everything else, boom.
Exactly, um, capital funding though, that is something that you would have to give me some direction on. Um, right now, there is no capital funding coming from our general revenue for twenty twenty-three. It would all have to come from the unassigned fund balance, which is healthy, but I don't know what kind of habit we wanna get into with that. And we went for several years really not having a lot of capital expenditures too, so now we're kinda behind the eight ball trying to catch up.
As usual. But yeah, again, no, and I'm glad you had that, that figuring given us, you know, we're already looking at with, with whatever revenue growth we've got with, with just requests. Now granted, before that's, that, you know, that's before our staff has done, uh, their work in, in review and adjustment before it comes to us for further review and adjustment, but a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisors, Wes, Mr. Ashcraft, would you like to wrap anything up from this evening before we get into our requests?
Mr. Chairman, I guess just looking ahead, uh, March second will be primarily the department head, uh, the departments of the county, uh, you'll be, you'll be hearing from them. And, uh, there are a couple more outside agencies, I believe, that, uh, uh, we couldn't fit in tonight, that we'll, we'll kinda headline out. And then your meeting next week, we're actually going to have the social services and the, uh, uh, the juvenile justice budgets. Since we don't have a real long agenda on February twenty-eighth, at least not excessive anyway. So no, uh, I hope this is still remaining helpful to you and, uh, any, uh, especially, uh, again, we'll, we'll give you scenarios on the salary, but it's a policy decision on whether you wanna increase, uh, or leave the same, or do partial. We'll, we know, we're gonna really start diving into that in the next couple of weeks about all these expenditure, you heard from outside agencies, uh, if there's, if there's requests that, uh, seem unreasonable, uh, you know, it's hard to just say you'll do them all or you'll do level funding. I think at some point, we do have to sit down and look at trends, and it does make it difficult when you have shared agreements with other locality. Sometimes you're almost forced philosophically to go along because everybody else is going along. But we'll do the best we can, and, uh, even the presentation isn't the final budget on March fourteenth. That's just what we've been able to put together and analyze for you, and, and, uh, then we'll have a couple more, uh, probably a couple more sessions before we have the public hearings and, uh, and, uh, sit, you know, set the budget, and, and the tax rate.
Very good.
I appreciate your input, appreciate everybody's presentation, I think it's good information.
Mr. Hodges, we'll begin with you tonight, any requests?
Not really, I, I, I think we'll, you know, that, that we'll try to do what we can, but no, I don't know that it's gonna be letting, getting it back to where everybody would like for it to be in the salary, so, but we can try and do the best we can with what we have, and that's all you can do is with what you have. And that's really all I have, thanks to the ones that did come out tonight.
Mr. Muscansky.
Uh, no, sir, just in respect to everybody who's come out and, and given such, uh, been so generous with their time to explain this stuff too.
Thanks for standing in there. Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah, did it with everybody else, so thanks for doing it, and I like your idea about kind of a couple scenarios, that way we have more options to pick from. Thanks for all your all's work.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing the salary comparisons between fire and EMS and the Sheriff's Department. If that was a wish list, I would put that near the top to make them equal. And I appreciate all the hard work, and these shorter meetings instead of a whole day budget meeting, it's fantastic.
Certainly for those that have only done it, this is their third time, those that have done it, uh, more than that, I hope it's working out better overall.
Anything better than rulers and calculators.
I still have my slide rule at home, so.
I remember, man, I.
I really don't have anything, appreciate, uh, everyone coming out and, and, uh, describing your budget requirements, and please, uh, make it, make it so we can understand what you need, that's, that's the hard part, I guess, sometimes you know what you need, but to translate that, to make it important for us to make the decision, that's, it's also important. So if I could entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Any discussion, Ms. Branch?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Bye.
Bye.